Please turn on your mics.
Good evening. A call to order, the Glen Rock Planning Board is April 3rd, 2025. Please all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance, two of five of the United States of America and two republics from which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tracy, would you call a roll, please?
Sure. Mr. Morley.
Here.
Mr. King, Mayor Mariko, Councilwoman Cole.
Here.
Chief Ackerman.
Here.
Ms. Triforis.
Here.
Mr. Solowski, Mr. Bolero.
Here.
Mr. Diaz Pizito.
Here.
And would you please read the sunshine law?
In accordance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, which went into effect January 19th, 1976, I hereby state that adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as follows: posting of the notice on the bulletin board outside these chambers, mailing of the notice to the Ridgewood News, and filing of the notice outside the borough clerk's office on January 17th, 2025. In addition to the foregoing, a notice was posted on the bulletin board in January of 2025, setting forth the regularly scheduled meetings for the year. A copy of the schedule was published in the Bergen Record on January 15th, 2025.
Thank you. Next item is approval of the minutes of the March 6th, 2025, regular meeting. Are there any comments regarding the minutes? Any corrections? No. Okay, then is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Cole.
Here. Yes.
Chief Ackerman.
Yes.
Ms. Triforis.
Yes.
Mr. Bolero.
Yes.
Mr. Diaz Pizito.
Yes.
And Mr. Morley.
Yes. Under old business, first item is the courtesy review by the Ridgewood Water Company regarding PFA treatment facility. The approval letter, I haven't seen the letter, actually. Maybe we could just go over Heather.
Did you not get my email with it? Let me put Mr. Solowski's here.
I didn't see it.
Okay, hold on a second.
Did everybody else get the letter?
No, we didn't get it. She's saying she didn't get it.
I did not either.
No, okay.
I can go copy more. Do we want to move on to the others and then we'll go back to this?
Yeah, that sounds good.
Okay. Next item under old business is the mayor and council resolution letter.
It's just an update on what we started last week or last month for cannabis.
Right, okay, so David, I would like to ask you about the research that we asked you, your firm, to conduct.
Yep.
And you might speak on that?
Of course. Good evening, everybody. My name is David Novak. I'm with Birch's Associates. I am covering for Ed Snikus tonight, who's out on vacation. Tonight, we'll be talking about the research that we conducted on cannabis. Just as a little background, this all stands back to the 2021 New Jersey Cannabis Regulatory Enforcement Assistance and Marketplace Modernization Act, which is a bit of a tongue twister. It's called the CREAM Act. What that legislation did is that it legalized cannabis consumption for adults aged 21 and over. It established six different classifications for cannabis, including cultivators, manufacturers, wholesalers, distributors, retailers, and delivery services. And that legislation also gave municipalities the ability and the authority to establish zoning standards for whether or not you want these uses, and if so, where do you want them and how many? So what our office was tasked to do was do essentially a mapping or a GIS exercise to look at certain buffers from certain buffer features and based on that, see where cannabis could potentially be located in the municipality. So the first thing that we did is that we identified certain community features. That included school.
Excuse me, I hate to interrupt. Is it possible to put that over there so the members in attendance can see it?
Yep. No, 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 no. Actually, I can turn it around because they all have.
We have copies of here.
That's a good idea.
There we go. And I have an actual one for you. So the first thing we did is that we identified certain community features, right? We identified schools, we identified parks, we identified houses of worship, daycare centers, childcare centers. We mapped all of those locations out. And after that, we, utilizing that GIS program, established a 2,000-foot buffer around each of those features, and that buffer is highlighted in a yellow circle. You can see with the 2,000-foot analysis, the entirety of the borough was essentially filled out. So if the borough was to permit cannabis uses but only allow them in resident or, I'm sorry, business districts that were about 2,000 feet away from these community features, there would be no conforming lots that would meet that standard. So if you were to regulate with that 2,000-foot buffer, there'd be no properties that would be able to accommodate cannabis. As a backup, though, we also looked at a 1,000-foot buffer, which I did not print out a big copy of, and I apologize, but I do have some smaller versions here if anybody from the public wants to take a look. We might have to share a little bit, so if you guys don't mind sharing a little bit, I'm sorry. I might be running out. Sorry, I got the 2,000-foot one, sorry. So with the 1,000-foot buffer, only, yeah, 2,000-foot buffer, right? So with the 2,000-foot buffer, I'm sorry, with the 1,000-foot buffer, what that buffer essentially did is that it eliminated most of the municipality as well. The only areas of Glen Rock that were not included in that 1,000-foot buffer would be two lots. They are directly across the street from the Bottle King. You have a shopping center where the farmer's market is located, and then a smaller business right next to that, to the south. That's where Jalapenos is located, if anybody's familiar with that restaurant, basically right next to Fairlawn. However, that analysis only relied upon a 1,000-foot buffer from those community features. So if you were to include a 1,000-foot buffer from any residentially zoned district as well, those properties would be excluded. So even falling back in that 1,000-foot buffer, you're essentially excluding every business zone within Glen Rock.
And we did request to include residential, the buffer from residential.
Yes, yes. So utilizing that buffer feature from either 2,000 feet to 1,000 feet, you're essentially blocking out the entirety of the municipality, so there would be no qualifying properties.
Hello, thank you.
Any questions by members of the board?
No questions.
Any questions by members of the public?
I'm sorry, just one question. So you indicated there's no properties available within 1,000 or 1,000 that would qualify for cannabis?
That is correct.
Gabe, could you pull your mic closer, please? I'm not picking you up. Thank you. Like, close.
I'm used to this from the zoning board hearings.
Gabe, you gotta pull it closer to you. Pull it all the way close.
Yeah, you indicated.
I'm sorry, you had to have the microphone closer to you.
Is that better?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. So you clearly indicated and you're confident that there are no properties available within 1,000 or 2,000 feet of any of the restricted areas.
Very confident, yes.
Thank you.
Any comments by members of the public? Oh, Mayor, excuse me, Mayor?
So would you have, would you be saying on the record that there is no location that would be appropriate in the borough of Glen Rock?
Relying on that 2,000-foot or 1,000-foot buffer, there's no properties that would be appropriate.
Thank you.
Any other questions by the board?
No, very straightforward.
Okay.
Okay.
Any questions or comments by members of the public? Then it appears that our recommendation to the council would be that there's no appropriate locations in the borough for a cannabis facility. Would someone like to make a motion to that effect?
I will make that motion.
Second.
I will second.
Can the mayor have a second?
Sure, sure, sure. I'll try and see you. Sorry.
Okay.
I withdraw.
Tracy, would you call a roll?
I withdraw.
Sure. Mayor Mariko?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cole?
Yes.
Chief Ackerman?
Yes.
Ms. Triforis?
Yes.
Mr. Solowski?
Yes.
Mr. Bolero?
Yes.
Mr. Diaz Pizito?
Yes.
And Mr. Morley?
Yes. Okay, we all have the letter, the recommendation of the Ridgewood PFA facility, so maybe take a quick look at it.
I did put as an attachment the board engineer's letter because of March 5th, 2025, which spelled out a lot of the conditions that I included. So.
I have a question for you on that. The first thing, you said that the items comply with Mr. Vince's correspondence letter, which we don't have the letter here, but we have it from before, but I just wanted to make sure that included, I believe, Mr. Vince had not only recommended but said that a new survey was needed.
Yes, and I believe I put that at the.
Oh, sorry, yep, I didn't get that far.
Right.
Okay.
Because that's really not a recommendation. He said that that was more of a condition, so that's why I didn't include it in the.
Perfect.
Number, in the recommendation part. Partial survey is what the board discussed.
Any other questions regarding the recommendation? Okay, if there's no other questions, is there a motion to approve the letter of recommendation?
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Mayor Mariko?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cole?
Yes.
Chief Ackerman?
Yes.
Ms. Triforis?
Yes.
Mr. Solowski?
Yes.
Mr. Bolero?
Yes.
Mr. Diaz Pizito?
Yes.
Mr. Morley?
Yes. Moving on to new business.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor and council resolution letter, where the council is asked to look at alternative methods for regulating mass and scale residential developments in the A1 and A2 zones. Tracy or Ms. Mayor, would you want to provide some background as to what concerns have raised this letter?
Let me take it, sure. I want to make sure I'm very clear about what the motivation is behind this. So over the past two years, we've had multiple meetings, whereas we've been discussing with our building department, the abuse and misuse of EGFR within the borough. What that means is, when EGFR was first introduced many years ago, it was in a way to eliminate the McMansions that started popping up all over town. But if you've noticed recently, we have not changed any of those rules or laws, but the McMansions are continuing to expand. And what we found was people were using different calculations and they were trying to find ways around it. So with that, there could be buildings that have been approved, that are currently occupied, which are not paying their full value of property taxes. That's just one part of it. But the other part is how frustrating it must be to be a legitimate, not that there's illegitimate. Let's use an example of a hardworking Glen Rock resident who is a contractor, real estate agent, developer, all in one. They know the rules, they follow the rules. They go to the building department with their plans, and that plan will more than likely be denied and told to get a variance. If that same Glen Rock resident who has all those characteristics walks around town and they can see a similar home going up, knowing in their mind that that's similar to what I put in and I was denied, how are they letting this happen? So what we're trying to do is find a way to stop that from continuing. So how do we do that? We need to revisit our EGFR. What it does not mean is that we are allowing the mansions to go up wherever. What we are doing is changing the calculations of what can fit within that envelope. Is that a good idea? A good summary? Yes.
Thank you.
But this has become a very large burden upon our building department as they're becoming more aware of plans that are being submitted, which are not calculated correctly, which creates a lot of extra work, a lot of, let's just say, communication between the developers and the contractors who are not happy that they're now being questioned. So I want to, oh, sorry, the intention of the mayor and council is to alleviate that factor from our building department having to deal with that issue, so they can focus on the work at hand, and which is, in essence, to pretty much enforce the laws that do currently exist. Now with that, there are ways to, if we remove EGFR, we're gonna have to find another way to calculate how we're gonna solve that issue. So we have asked that the planning board review this for consistency with the master plan as always, and then we have a special counsel tonight to discuss the different tools that we can use in order to maintain the standard that is the law of the borough of Glen Rock.
Ms. Mertz?
Yes, thank you all for having me. My name is McKinley Mertz. I'm a principal with Higher Gruel and Associates. I am a planner. As the mayor said, you all have brought Arferman, your regular planner, who I've worked with Ed and David and his whole office many times, have great respect for them. It's our understanding they are conflicted out of this particular topic. So we're gonna come in and help just with this very discreet EGFR issue. I have a colleague, John Berry, who is the planner in Ridgewood, just a few minutes away from you all. He's also newly appointed planner in Little Falls, so I will be relying on him greatly for his local knowledge of the area. He unfortunately always has a conflict the same nights as your fine folks' planning board meeting. So we will tag team this essentially, but we do have someone with local knowledge, and we also have done these types of projects for several towns. You are not the only community who adopted a version of an FAR standard in an attempt to help regulate the McMansions very specifically. There was a lot of these adopted in the mid-2000s that just about all of them have proven cumbersome. They have failed for all the reasons that are happening here. Developers have learned how to take advantage of them to the detriment of your regular homeowner. So we have helped several towns repeal these and replace them with something that still helps control your massing, but is easier to implement, easier to calculate, and ultimately harder to essentially get around and find the loopholes in. So my purpose tonight is really to kick off this project. We will begin really more of a background analysis of your zoning and what's happened on the ground. Recently, Tracy's been a great help in the last week since we were appointed to do this, and we'll be working closely with her. I understand there's already been some work done on this in the last few years. So my hope from you all tonight is not to take too much of your time, but get an idea about the real concerns, the mayor had a good summary just now, but real concerns about what you're seeing in town, if you have examples of successful developments that have gone in that you're pleased with, the massing, that you would like to emulate and see other locations, if you have specific examples of really, really bad and offensive developments that have gone up that we could, that we could take a look at. And ultimately, it's my understanding that the borough does wish to do away with the EGFR and the other floor area standards. If we're incorrect with that, please, please jump in and correct me. But that's, tonight's really just a beginning of the dialogue, and then we're gonna go back and do our research, talk to Tracy, get some more information about what's already happened, and then hopefully we'll be back in front of you with recommendations in the coming, coming weeks and months. Any immediate questions for me or about the process?
No? I do. Yes, please. And this is more for the public's knowledge. So when we want to create a new envelope for which we decide that the massing will be to our liking, what exactly is the timeline on this? I know we would have to probably create a smaller subgroup. You get feedback from this body, and then you would present at a future date, it's not gonna happen tonight, a proposal with the factors that we have collectively decided upon.
Exactly, yes. So you hit it right on the head. We would recommend putting together a small subcommittee that we could meet with that would not qualify as a quorum, so that we could probably meet through Zoom meetings mostly during the day. We would set maybe a bi-weekly time, every Friday at noon, every Thursday at four, something along those lines. Maybe not every week. Usually with the nature of this work, every other week or every third week makes a little bit more sense. But it would start with our firm doing a little bit of background research and then coming to the subcommittee with some initial thoughts about what we, as the professionals, see, but obviously wanting to hear you as the residents and as the board members, if what we're interpreting is accurate, and have, have back and forth for two or three subcommittee meetings before putting together a list of recommendations, maybe even some preliminary designs, sketches of what we might envision, and coming back to this full board for a fuller review of the preliminary. I would imagine after that, there will be some tweaks, and we would come back with hopefully a more revised version after that. Timing-wise, it's really gonna be driven by the conversations with the subcommittee and how, I'll say how those go in terms of the detail and the direction they wish us to go. We have seen these projects start down one lane, and then as we do the discussions, more and more comes up, and we kind of veer very far to another direction, for the better of the community, but you know, sometimes these are cumbersome standards and things can come up that weren't anticipating, which is why we like the subcommittee to help us drive the process. So I'd imagine timeline, if we could start the subcommittee meetings within the next couple of weeks, we would anticipate being back here in front of this board, maybe end of, end of May or June to do another review. I was gonna say, actually, you're, you guys meet the first Thursday of every month, right? So it would probably be June, since we're April 3rd right now.
Any questions by board members?
Yeah, so I'm just, so the end goal here is to be able to have a more defined process where, let's say, someone who's a resident and invested in the community, has a growing family and needs to add a room or two, is able to do that, but we can have more control over the developer who is not personally invested in the community, is just coming here to build the maximum square footage, sell it, make their profit, and go on to the next town.
So ultimately, we're not, we can't discriminate between the developers versus residents, but the goal is, the goal is to make it easier for the residents, so it's less cumbersome on them.
Balance.
But balance, right, and we want to control the massing and the massing of a building in a way that's easy to understand and hard to break the rules on.
And I'm gonna just add a little bit to that, if you don't mind, and easier to enforce is the biggest thing.
Yeah.
And a resident or a developer in the future, if this is changed, still has the option to go to the board for a variance. So maybe it was, maybe it is built to the maximum, but whatever that new maximum is gonna be, by however we deter, you know, however that's determined, they'll still have the option to go in front of the board, but it's, again, it's not discriminating against one or the other, but you'll still have the option of a variance.
Mm-hmm.
But not a way of getting around a current ordinance that's not working.
So you can just evaluate the situation on its own merits if they go looking for an exception.
Correct, correct. Exactly. They still would have, if anyone needed a deviation, they'd still have to make their case in front of the zoning board, meet the planning criteria, and the zoning board would be able to analyze it based on the specifics of that case. But we, you know, we see problems with, with any FAR, whether it's your EG FAR or otherwise, you know, they don't account for two-story foiers, but that doesn't mean we want to prohibit residents from having two-story foiers. We just want to make sure it's designed and placed in a way that doesn't overcome the site with this monstrous building that clearly doesn't fit the community or the lot itself.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Question?
Please.
We're really speaking about the effective floor area ratio?
Correct.
Yes. Let me ask you, is there a difference between that for a homeowner that owns a property at that time, that has a relatively average-sized lot, but its square footage of the property is small?
Put your mic, put your mic on.
I'm sorry, let me say it again. We're talking about the effective floor area ratio, correct?
Yes.
Is there a difference between a homeowner that has that property and has a smaller house there, what he can do with that property, provide it under the zoning, which is what, 35% coverage, 3.5?
I believe I, we were just appointed on Tuesday, so I'm not sure the standards yet.
There's an entire formula.
Yes.
Based on the lot. It's not necessarily 0.35.
Yeah, based on the lot, exactly, but they, when you multiply the length of the lot, which is up to 140 feet, correct, times the width of the lot, you get a number, and you multiply that number, the square footage, by 35%.
No, that's incorrect.
And that would be the effective square area?
Gabe, Gabe, that's incorrect.
It's not correct. That's why I'm asking her.
So, so floor area, a floor area ratio period is, is general, and I know there's all these caveats associated with Glen Rock specifically, but generally, floor area ratio is calculated by multiplying the square footage of every floor of a house by the overall square footage of a lot. That's how you get, it's a decimal point. That's the ultimate number. What Glen Rock has done, my understanding, preliminary over the last week of reviewing, is there are various exceptions, there's various percentages, there's various setbacks that these dimensions I just mentioned are measured from, which has added to the confusing nature of how you calculate this. But at its root, it's taking the floor area, the gross floor area, and dividing it by the lot area to get, to get a ratio. It's cumbersome, though, because as I mentioned before, it doesn't take into account two-story spaces. What do you do with storage? What do you do with a club, a pool house? There's, there's all sorts of deviations and caveats that are accounted for in your existing ordinance, in an attempt to help control the massing, but the negative effect of that has been, it is very confusing and hard to implement and hard to enforce, as was mentioned.
What I'm saying is that right now, as it stands, whether it be the homeowner that owns that property presently, or a developer that purchased that property, the ordinance is the same for both of them.
Correct, it's not calculated any differently.
So may I ask our board attorney, if we distinguish between a homeowner's requirements and a developer's requirements, would that be discriminatory? Is that legal to do that?
I wouldn't suggest that. I don't, you can't, you can't, usually it's the same for everybody.
That's what I would think, yes.
Yeah, you can't discriminate between.
Again, you're telling me that, I'm sorry, it would not be legal, right?
Yeah.
You're telling me now that, my impression was it was the length of the lot up to the first 100, and I believe 40?
So that's, there is, there are caveats in your ordinance that has, depending on where it's measured from. One of them is the, provided a lot with, I'm sorry, a lot depth of 140 feet. There's a measurement within 175 feet. So there, what I explained to you is the basic where it comes from, and now Glen Rock has, has added the setbacks.
Can I just finish and ask you, and then you tell me if it's correct or not correct? My impression is that you take the first 140 feet of the lot, whether it be in Zone 1, R1, or R2.
I have to, I have to stop you because I don't know the answer, because we, we've just started. Tracy's telling me that's not correct. I have yet to fully understand how your ordinance does calculate it. It is very complicated, so.
My impression is this, and then you could check to see if it's correct or not correct. The first 140 foot, 140 feet of the lot, whether it be in R1 or R2, the only difference between R1 and R2, from what I know, is that in the R1 area, the lots are bigger. The lots are bigger. In R2, the lots are slightly smaller. So the first 144, 140 feet of the lot, whether it be in R1 or R2, is what counts. Forget about if it's 200 feet, 250 feet. And then the width is whatever the width is. So a lot that is, let's say, 60 by 200, you just multiply the width, which is 60, times 140, and you get a square footage. And my impression is then you take 35%, 3.5% of that, that would be the square footage that you can build on that lot.
I don't think that's correct, but.
So just check to see that.
Yes, there's, it is different in the A1 and A2. There are different standards.
If it's not correct, next time you tell us.
So I can tell you that it is a different, it is different dimensions for the A1 versus the A2. They're not done the same.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that I do know.
Any other questions from Ms. Mertz, board members? Any questions from members of the public? Please, come on up.
Yep, if you can go up there and just press the button, it'll turn green. Thank you.
And please state your name and your address.
Hi, John Handle, 59 Grozwell Place. Thanks for coming out. I rushed over here because it's an important issue. Just curious, just sort of a different idea. Have any municipalities implemented a knockdown fee associated with the house?
Like a demolition fee you're talking?
Yeah, so I think a big problem is you have the community. Yeah, so I think a big problem is you have the community, someone comes in, they smash the whole house down, they put up a house that looks very different than all the other houses. As, as any municipality said, if you do that, there's an added fine that goes along, or not a fine, but a fee that goes along with the builder coming and knocking down the house and putting up something that's different.
I haven't, I've not heard of a fee. I've heard of in historic districts, a demolition delay, where they have to delay the demolition of what the town considers a historic asset. I believe, and I'll have to defer to the board's counsel on this, legal counsel, I believe that that would prohibit the rights of a landowner, and while we control what you can do on your property in terms of massing and use, we, 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 meaning the government, does not have control over whether or not you choose to demolish or maintain your structure. So I'd have to confer with legal about whether or not there's a legal precedent to permit that.
That'd be great, because I mean, it does create an inconvenience for the town in terms of creating a construction site for a considerable amount of time.
Sure, it can be very disruptive.
So if you could check it, that would be great.
Sure.
Thank you.
Sean, what was your last name?
Hendel.
Thank you.
Any other questions for members of the public? Please, come forward.
Lucy Varshavsky, 9 Field Mayor.
Can you say, can you, you can hold it closer to you. What's her name?
Lucy Varshavsky, 9 Field Mayor.
Thank you.
I have two questions. So the town is going to engage the outside firm to do some recommendation for us, for, for the building?
Yes, that's, that's correct. We, we have a professional planner to advise us with this issue.
But that is, that's simply based on the fact that our borough planner has conflicted out. He's representing another entity which has a stake in this matter, in our town, not in our town, in a different, different town. So when you have a conflict, you have to get a, a separate attorney to retain. So she's here just for this matter only.
Right, and, and as I understand now, the current rules for building new houses are very, there's a lot of variances, there's a lot of rules, exceptions. Have that attempt been made to simplify them? So to, because eventually, as I said, like when we were building the house, we were denied for whatever reason. The, the water was found and we asked for the house to be six inches tall than in the plan, and we were denied. And a year later, on our street, when this two houses down from ours, a house was built that's definitely taller than ours. I don't know how it happened, and our house was already built, but can the, can the town attempt to simplify the rules, because that, that may cause less confusion in the future?
I, I think that that's the purpose of this whole process. Yeah. Is to make it fair to the residents and not just to the builders.
Simplify it as well.
And simplify it. That's to simplify the effective gross floor area ratio, that's what this, this purpose is. Okay.
And, and also to make enforcement easier, which will help with that issue.
To make enforcement easier based on the rules or based on, based on what? So you have different rules?
When people break the rules.
Well, when they break it, it's too late, you know, the house.
Oh, it's never too late.
You can take it down.
Yeah.
When they break the rules, applying for?
No, no, no. When they apply for a building to be put up, the building goes up, and then when the department goes in to do inspections and the building does not match the initial plans that were submitted, this gives them more teeth to be like, you didn't do this the way you said you were, this has to be removed, this has to be removed, or get a variance.
You just don't give them certificate of occupancy if they didn't do it right.
But you don't know that until you go in to inspect at the end of construction.
So yes, you go to inspect it, and the house is not built based.
And that's when it's found.
And you, you can't just deny them certificate.
Yes, you can. You can.
We can, that, that is what's happening now.
You can?
Yes, absolutely. They, if they don't comply with zoning on the zoning officer, if they submit an as-built and something is incorrect, whether it was incorrect on their plans or incorrect on site, they, I will not sign off on zoning. So they will not get final zoning, and if I don't sign on zoning, the construction official cannot give them a CO to occupy.
It's a very good initiative, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the public? Then that's the last item on the agenda. Is there any new business that any members would like to raise now? Any issues?
Oh, yeah, subcommittee? Do we want to set up a subcommittee? Do you want us to speak first, whatever?
I was going to say, I'll, I'll defer to the board if you'd like to speak internally or, Mr. Chairman, if you want to appoint people, whatever process makes the most sense, we would like to set up a subcommittee sooner than later, since I know this, this topic is important. But ultimately, it's up to you, we just would ask that it's not a quorum of the board.
Okay. Let's talk about that.
Yes.
So Tracy, this is a technical committee, subcommittee, so it'd be great if you could be on it, I think. You're not a member of the planning board, but if you, you're.
Yes, I'm going to be involved. And I, I think my explanation besides to McKinley would be also helpful to the members on the subcommittee and ultimately the entire board.
I would insist actually that Tracy be on it. She will be a valuable voice, yes.
And who else should be on the, on the subcommittee? The mayor? Okay.
I think Sue Trifores, as a borough, is former borough historian. She has extensive knowledge on the background of the borough.
That's three, is that enough?
Well, Tracy, do you count?
I wouldn't count as a quorum.
Maybe one more planning board member?
I'll go on.
Okay. Jason? I think three.
Three's the max, right?
Yep.
Three's the max.
I have to look at the volume, but I think three. How many is a four? Five. Seven.
Okay, Gabe, okay.
You need one?
Yeah.
Okay, fine.
Okay, Gabe, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Is there any other issues that we need to discuss? Okay, if not, the meeting's adjourned. Thank you.
You need a motion?
I'll wait there.
I'll second.
Members, please turn off your mics.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Meeting's adjourned.
Thank you.
Sue, take your mic.
Wasn't too bad?
No, no, no.
No, but why, is it, is it lowered?
I try, I try to control it with the computer, I just don't know how to do it with the phone. I don't know how to do it, look, I watch.
Does it go out like that sometimes? It goes out sometimes?
I think it's also the room, it's big room, and also the women who's speaking, women speak softer.
We need you.
No, no.
We need you.
I don't hear what you said.
I know, we need you.
But you know.